Welcome to the Lander County Commission Meeting. Oh, sorry.
I'm muted.
Am I ready to go? All right, starting over, sorry.
This conference will now be recorded.
Calling the meeting to order, welcome to the Lander County Commission Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners for April 8th, 2021. Will you go ahead and lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going into a moment of silence. All right, we'll have to go ahead and move forward. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioner reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you, I have no report.
All right, I do not have any reports. Brian?
No report.
No reports.
All right, very uneventful, couple of weeks. All right, so staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
And I have no report either.
Everything I have is on the agenda or the upcoming agenda.
All righty. For public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? All right, not hearing any, we're going to move forward.
Muted. Unmuted.
Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any members of the board or citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available to Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal fee, starting with one, approval of April 8th, 2021 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of May 7th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of February 11th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number four, approval of February 25th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number five, approval of March 11th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number six, approval of March 22nd, 2021 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Number seven, approval of March 25th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. And number eight, approval of payroll change requests. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion we approve items one, three, and eight.
Rob?
Which is the approval of April 8th, 2021 Agenda Notice, approval of February 11th, 2021 Meeting Minutes, and approval of payroll change requests.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Just a comment, we did get the minutes from February 25th, you didn't get those?
I did get them. So I'll amend that motion to include item four, which is approval of February 25th, 2021 Meeting Minutes.
All right, with a second of JR.
Yes.
All right, all right. Brian made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, moving forward. So, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the payments of bills, with that being said, I'll be pulling check number 211347 for point S. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a, are we approving that bill?
We're pulling that, we're pulling that right now.
Okay, so I'll make a motion we approve to pay the remainder of the bills.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Brian made the motion, JR seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we're going to do the payment.
I'll make a motion we approve check number 211347.
All right, your second? I'll second it. So, Patsy made the motion, Kathy seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain?
I abstain, it's to my employer.
All right, very good, moving forward. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the University of Nevada Reno Cooperative Extension Budget, that was tabled at the March 22nd, 2021 Special Budget Meeting. There is an increase to operations by forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. So, do we have anybody on the line for this item?
You can ask if Holly's on there.
Who?
Holly.
Holly, are you on the line?
Did she call in on the right one?
Yeah, she knows what she's supposed to say.
Because on one of them, when we unmute or something, they can't talk, and the other one they can?
Well, we're unmuted, so she, if she was on the line, she'd be able to speak right now.
Yeah. Even if they call in audio only, they can still speak.
So has she, did she call in to begin with?
Well, we, unless caller number two is on here, it's her, which I don't believe is, she's not speaking. Holly, if you are on the line, you would have to unmute yourself on your side. Everything on our side is unmuted.
So we're going to, I go ahead and hear this again?
Well, I, no, you guys can act on it, there's no reason to table it twice.
Well, I'd like, what's the, all right.
I would, I would just like to point out to the commission that this is, it's modify, is what, is what it appears to me, and, and legal opinion as well, is that they're trying to modify a contract through budget as opposed to modifying the contract as a contract. We have a signed contract that is good for, I believe, five years, is that correct?
Two years, two years. This budget year and next year.
Okay.
And I suggest, or recommend, I should say, more precise language, that you budget according to the existing contract.
I would have to agree.
And if they want to modify it and have us pay a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars instead of seventy-two thousand dollars, they need to come in front of this commission with an agenda with specificity, so, so it's not done behind scenes. And so the public knows what they're asking for and requesting, and, and ask to modify the contract.
Now, on this, yeah, okay. So this is, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, now is this the unfilled position? Or what?
We haven't had this filled for what, two years, three years?
Two years.
So, okay, so we haven't had it filled for three years, however, we're getting almost a fifty thousand dollar increase.
We, we don't pay for it, they pay for it, they don't have money this year. The state doesn't have money, so there, we have a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that we signed a document in 2019, and your signature's affixed to it, that the hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars will be spent over the next five years for certain things, and they want to tap into the hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and have us pay for their trajectory.
So everything that says it will be financed by fund balance is taking it out of our ad valorem that we have put, that is designated for them, but we didn't want to use it all up, like we said, so.
But it's designated for a five-year term.
Yeah, so they, yes, and so.
By their agreement that they presented to us and signed it, and the director signed it.
So then with that being said, do we, the correct way to do it is to just follow the contract and follow the lines?
Yeah, legally, that's.
Don't even take action, we just don't take action.
So, yeah, we don't take action on it?
Okay, so I have everything under the fund balance that they want to take out is a hundred and three thousand two hundred and fifty. Is that what you came up with? The other part that they show for revenue, and if you look at the, the one they highlighted here, you have to go back through each one, I have the revenue they're using. Right now, we show our ad valorem will be, this is with a ten percent discount of seventy-six thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars that we have to spend, and for what they have designated of that, it comes to sixty-eight nine sixty-eight.
Right, so.
So, so we're fine on that, but we have several things that will not be funded unless we.
But they're not in the contract either, Patsy.
No, but, but I'm saying.
So, so they want us to fund things that aren't contained in the contract, that were not contracted, we obligated to do.
Yeah, we don't need to set their precedence, we have a contract, we need to follow the contract.
We have a contract, and if they want to come back and open their contract and discuss it that way, they can do that way, so I'm not for changing that.
This is just, this is just not an upfront technique that they're using. I don't appreciate this, from a legal standpoint, Mark.
Well, not only that, it makes it confusing, because you're like, you know, all right, so we just go ahead and go with our existing contract, and they can either ask, be on the agenda to open the contract.
Right, to modify.
To modify.
So I, I would suggest you just, someone make a motion that, that the budget should follow the dictates of the existing contract.
All right, so do we have a motion for that?
I don't think we need one, do we Ted?
Uh.
Because we have a contract with them.
We have a contract, but you need something in the budget, so.
You would, you need to just approve their budget, but you can approve it without an increase. Their current budget is only a hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-two, so you could just approve it as the same amount for their budget as the current year.
Okay.
Well, I mean, some of that wasn't used, though, right?
No, but it, it starts over, July 1st.
I'm sorry, what was the amount like?
A hundred and twenty-three thousand, oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-two.
Okay.
And that's to pay what we already have in the contract, yes.
So, do we have a motion for that?
Yeah, we do have to have something in the budget, we really can't keep putting this off, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the budget that of one twenty-three six forty-two, and to follow the contract.
All right, very good.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
All right, Patsy made the motion, Brian seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, moving forward. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove requests from Fallon Naval Air Station to use apron space.
Muted.
Refueling and hangar space.
Unmuted.
Of May 4th, 2021 through May 6th, 2021, at the Battle Mountain Airport. All right. You gentlemen are up.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commission, my name is Rob Rule from the Naval Air Station Fallon. I work for the commanding officer, and really, my job is to make sure that we're out in the community, talking to local political elements, and everybody else, to make sure that there's a good line of communication. For this particular instance, we have used the Battle Mountain Airport several times to stage helos, to work with larger events that are on the range. And this morning, I brought Lieutenant Commander Klein, callsign LA, with me to make sure that we have, you know, we have any questions or comments to be answered. But that, the Battle Mountain, I'm sorry, the Battle Mountain Airport has worked out very well for the, for the Navy. Really, it functions as a pre-deployed area for our helicopters. The, those helos are coordinated with larger events, usually what is done out of the airport here is combat search and rescue. So Commander Klein can go through that a little bit, if you guys have any comments or questions, for a little bit more clarity on that. Excuse me. But it has worked out really well, because it is a much more realistic scenario to have the helos deployed at a remote area vice flying out of the, out of the Naval Air Station, where you just kind of roll out of bed and onto your helo. It's a little bit unfamiliar, so again, Commander Klein can go through that if there's any, anything in particular. So again, it's worked out very well for the Navy, hopefully has worked out well for the county as well. Hopefully, everybody has been very well behaved, we're making sure that, that we're twisting everybody's arm to make sure that they treat everybody with respect and the facilities with respect, and we'll continue to do that in the, in the future. So I'm going to hand this very quickly over to Commander Klein to see if there's any, anything he wants to add to what we had just said.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us. As you said, my name is Mark Klein, callsign LA, short for Little Angry. Joined right out of high school in nineteen ninety-five, and I've been flying for the last fifteen years of those multiple combat tours throughout the world and multiple teaching tours, until I find myself within Nevada's state boundaries here, and teaching weapons and tactics to America's finest, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Does, does the commission want to hear any of the particulars, I think, hopefully we're provided with, with the read ahead?
Yeah.
I think that has almost everything that possibly could, could be answered, but if, if you have that read ahead, that's great, if you have any other questions or comments, that would, you're more than welcome to hit us up with, with what you have.
We have copies of the read heads, if anybody needs.
Oh, yeah, we have, thank you very much.
And thank you indeed for your service, absolutely.
Absolutely, all of you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know, it's, everything's pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from the Fallon Naval Air Station to use our apron space, refueling, and hangar space for the dates of May 4th, 2021 through May 6th, 2021, at the Battle Mountain Airport.
Second?
I'll second.
All right.
My apologies for the interjection, we would actually be requesting to use it from the second through the fifth, or second through the sixth. We would show up on the second and leave on the sixth.
Oh, second?
May 2nd?
Yes, ma'am.
Correction to May 2nd, to May 6th.
All right, so Patsy made the motion, JR seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good, all done. Thanks, guys.
Lander County really appreciates.
Absolutely.
We greatly, greatly appreciate your hospitality, thanks for having us, and we appreciate your letting us.
Thank you.
Nice to be here, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the invitation, and if any time you want us to come up, we will.
Oh, yes, thanks for your service, gentlemen.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, moving forward. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the transition from the Commissioner's paper packets to the agenda, to paperless. All right.
So, I focus on the agenda, it's, it's solely individual, I know Art does not want to go away from the paper. We're paying about seven hundred bucks a month in, in printing costs right now, so if we can, if we can lower them a little bit, that, that would be nice.
I am, I have been the Guinea pig, and this is the first time I've, I've done the iPad only, and, and it works well. And they download everything, and I go through it.
And you're able to make the marks on it and save it?
Yes, I have a little pen and.
Yeah, you can write on it like a notepad, it will, we would get anybody who would opt out of, out of the paper, it'd make Caitlin's life a lot easier, because she spends a good portion of her Fridays putting together these packets, where we could press send on the email, and it'd be a done deal. Is it, is it something to where if we have the iPad in our possession, they can download it via, they send an email link?
Oh, yeah.
They can download it, so we don't have to come in and pick it up?
That's right.
Nice.
That's how they do it.
Put me down for one.
Okay.
And it works well.
I can show you guys too, like Bert was saying, I have the newer iPad and the Apple pencil, so if you want to see how I, I just scroll through the agenda, I make my marks, it saves it, you can scroll with your finger without scribbling all over it, it works pretty well, so if you'd like to see how I do it, I can show you.
I'll get with you after the meeting. Yeah, just for notes, Elko's County Commission, they, all of them use it, and there's some seniors there, so.
I've no, I've been to their meetings before.
No insult to Elko County, if you guys are listening, but, but the, but just so you guys know, there, it's, it does become pretty adaptable once, once you start, but it takes a little bit of, little bit of time, I know that I'm, I'm learning as well, so.
And I know that there's the one, like Ted mentioned earlier, that you have two hundred pages, you have to, you know, whip through it to try to find that, that item, and so that's the only downfall.
If we skip items, which say to us all for us not ever skipping an item again, it,
it is a little bit more complicated, because you have to scan back and forth to get, so maybe it'll deter that a little bit as well.
Actually, we tried this before, we had a couple commissioners that did, that did use, you know, the iPads. The whiteout on my computer screen doesn't work real well, I know, and I do try that. I, I'm old fashioned, I love, I love the old, because not only do I flip so much quicker, but all my notes, and I keep adding and adding. So I'm okay with that, but what I'm wondering is, even if we decide to, like Art would like it, and of course I can print out mine, but even to save a tree, if we could do perhaps our correspondence and our finance, and, and let Art and I go back and just scroll on the finance, I'm okay, I just don't want to sit hours before my computer, and sometimes these, especially minutes, minutes or hours. So if we save that, if we save the minutes, the correspondence, and the finance, we could save a couple trees, and maybe some extra money, and then print out the rest, and if, if Art and I are the only ones that are printing, of course, that's fine, I don't know what JR wants to do.
What do you, what do you think?
But perhaps we could, we could do that, so we could curtail it a little bit? Because I don't mind going on and going through the budget, you know, with computer and stuff, but for my actual agenda items, I.
Well, I think for our sake, it'd, it'd be easier to be one or the other, and if you would like, anybody, if anybody wants to print, you can all, you know, we can always print the packet once it's sent individually, and it would save us from putting the whole pack together and having it in the, in the notebook and the whole line, but.
Okay.
I think it, it'd be one way or the other would make our job a lot easier.
Okay.
If I can approach, I'll, I'll show you what my, you know, I'll show you the screens for agenda number, well, this is five, agenda number four.
Oh, yeah.
And then you just screen.
Well, it's just like pulling it up on your computer, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you just screen, you just go up, and then the pages you can just hit if you want to go.
Okay.
Is there, Caitlin, is there a search option on there? You can search by keyword, if you wanted to go to a particular agenda?
I think you just do Ctrl+F.
Ctrl+F, and then it'll pull up the search tab, yeah, so, I think it'll be great.
Yeah, Ted has a keyboard, I don't, I have the keyboard also, but I don't bring it in the meeting with me, but I'll show you just quickly, so if I want to take a note, there's a little pencil here, and then I can take notes, click off of that, and you can scroll, you can, like, I keep all of my.
Oh, that's, that's on every, every item?
I have all my notes down here.
Yep.
You just click on it, and then you can scroll up and, and go through the locker pack.
And you have your tab on the side, so you can scroll quickly.
Oh, wow.
Right to the backup key here, the backup.
Oh, that sounds pretty simple.
Yeah.
If I can do it, it's simple.
I'm, I'm good with that, and, because I, it does, it makes me sick, how much paper we weigh, it's really, yeah, it's just a sick thing, so I, I'm, I'm good for trying.
I'll make a motion that we approve transition from the Commissioner's paper packets for the agendas to paperless.
I'll second it.
So Brian made the motion, JR seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, public comment? Go ahead.
Caitlin, is this the program that we're working with, with Mike, with PDI?
I believe so, I think that'll help, it'll help me as far as like uploading the packet and stuff, but I haven't quite learned how it will help with this process too, but there may be a branch without software that could help.
Okay, so there may be additional things to do, and it should be very beneficial to where the search engine will get with him and see if he wanted a specific sheriff's office, or, you know, title, or whatever, that we'll get with him and see if that's in that program, and so then that way you can do the search as well, or time frames, you can go in and, if you knew it was in a, you know, certain area, you're looking for something.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, that would be nice.
And as I work more with Melissa and you guys, I think we'll learn a little bit more of that too, and I could bring it to Bert, and talk about that. Thank you.
So then question, once, if we're looking for minutes, can, is there a way to, once they've been approved, and we've approved them here, is there a search engine where you can type in the approved minutes for a certain meeting?
I think that's what she referred to.
Is that what she was just saying?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize that's what you were saying, I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound redundant, I didn't understand you were talking about the actual minutes itself.
No, you're fine, say this again.
Basically, what happens is we'll be scanning the packet, we scan it now into the archiving system, so you'll have any recorded contracts, whatever have you, and so that gets scanned in there, so if we have to download an icon on, on base, onto your laptops, whatever it may be, then you'll be able to have that search engine.
Nice, okay.
As well, so I hope, could that answer your question?
Yes, it doesn't, they, sorry, I'm trying to be redundant.
No, 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 that's fine, it may be another program that you have to download to search, but we can definitely make that happen.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
Can, can you download it on an iPad?
All right, moving forward. For discussion only regarding the library contract services, Casey Andes Tucci from Elko, Lander, Eureka Library Systems will provide an update.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Cassie Andes Tucci.
Sorry.
It's a hard one. And then Melissa Spence, the Assistant Director of the Commission as well.
Yeah, there, thank you. Sorry about that. So we're just here, we know that there's been some questions about the current, the contract that we submitted, as well as some discussion about Lander possibly taking over the library themselves, so we're not really here to sway in one direction or the, the other, but we were hoping.
Thanks, gentlemen, go ahead.
To answer your questions, and then if you did choose to go your own route, give you some, some information so that you're prepared on what that would look like. So would the commission prefer that we just sort of go over the contract, do you have specific questions, and how would you prefer we do this?
Bert, you had some, for them some questions as far as the contract goes for the library?
No, that, the, I don't have any questions on the contract for the library as well. The reason I put this as an update only is because they had requested to renew their contract, but it's not up for renewal yet, and with everything that we're considering, I didn't want to put that on as an action item, so this is for them to present on their behalf. Yeah, so, yeah, just go ahead and present and.
Okay, so most of the contract is the same contract that we've been going off since the eighties, I believe eighty-one is the first time we had an actual signed agreement between our two counties. We did update some of the language, and we did this with our Eureka contract as well, because we also are, offer extended services to them. So I don't know, does the commission have copies of the contract available at the moment, or?
No, because we don't.
We've looked at the contract, I think, I think as a board, we've kind of been, we've been steering in the direction of possibly just providing our own library services, and I'll, and I'll point a, point a, make a point with the rest of the commission here, I had two calls from constituents in the community that when they went to the library, they had to wear masks to go in the library, or they could stay outside and they'd bring the books to them, and they said, well, we thought Lander County is wide open, so I had called Bert, I informed them, yes, we are wide open, but it, it's, that's the problem we get into when we contract, because it's, their employees, it's their policy, even though they're, we're wide open, our constituents still have to wear a mask when they go inside that library, so that, that's another reason why I'm still like so for buying our own books and doing our own library services, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, and, but that isn't our quote policy, we ask that they wear a mask, but if they don't want to, we leave it at that.
We're following them.
It isn't something we force.
Well, this constituent told me that they were not allowed to go in without a mask, period, so they waited curbside and had the books brought to them, so that's.
We are asking that patrons wear the mask as part of the state's continued mask mandate, as well as that is what Elko County is doing.
Even though Lander County is, is open county?
We receive federal and state funding, so we, we still follow the state mandates as well.
You don't receive it for our library?
We do. All of our libraries receive federal and state funding that we use for grant programs, that, some of the databases that the library, that your patrons here use, are provided through the state, not through us.
So another point being perfectly said, why we should have our own, that we're not tied to anybody, we own our own thing and can do what we want to do, so.
So things, things to consider, if, if that is the route that you take, the state of Nevada does have minimum standards for libraries, we are, there are statutes that dictate how libraries are run, and the state library does have minimum standards to be considered a public library and receive grant funding and any support under the state. So things that you'd have to consider, you would need to form a library board of trustees under the state of Nevada, the library board has full governing authority over libraries. You would need to hire a director to fill that position, and that director would either Um, you would need to hire a director to fill that position and that director would either need to hold a library certification or a master's degree. And that is, um, the standard for your population size. We did check for you. You would also probably need to increase the amount of money that you're currently spending on books. Um, we just charge a fraction of what we actually spend, but there are state standards on how much of the overall library budget has to be spent on materials. Um, those are just a few of the examples. You would also have to continue to loan to other libraries. We have an interlibrary loan agreement with all of the libraries in the state of Nevada. So the books in Battle Mountain, they're not just, your, your patrons don't just have those books. They have books from Vegas, from Elko, from Reno, everywhere in the state. They actually, we have global access. We'll pull books from other countries if we can't get them local. Um, if you do go your own way, that would mean that we would terminate our two current library positions. Because they're currently held under Elko County, um, they're Elko County employees. So they would lose their positions at the end of June. Um, so we would like to give them a heads up. I don't know what the transition would look like on your end, but we would terminate at that point. Um, other things to consider, the internet through E-rate, you would still be responsible for those costs. There's still two years left on that internet contract. You would no longer fall under our E-rate certification, meaning you would have to qualify as a library and then certify with, um, USAC. To receive the discounted funds. Um, and then I know it's come up in the past, but you do still have post-employment benefits for one of the librarians that retired before my time. Um, she does still receive the state insurance. And there was a law passed, I want to say it was in two thousand three, A B. Two thirty-six, I have it here somewhere. Um, that says that the local government is responsible for paying those costs. So that is a cost that you would still have to maintain. Also, cost-wise, just for comparison, um, population-wise, branch size-wise, um, your setup's really close to Mineral County. That was the closest library system in Nevada that we could find that matched up with what Lander would look like. Their population's a little bit smaller. Their annual budget's three hundred and twenty thousand. That's three times what we charge to run your libraries. So you would have increased costs there as well.
So a lot of these, uh, um, requirements that you stated, is this because, uh, we're accepting, uh, is state-funded and federally funded?
So to get the, the internet, um, to bring in the fiber at the discounted rate, we did agree to, um, E-rate, which is a federal program. Um, it goes based off of the community's poverty level, which is tied to the school lunch program. So right now, Lander is receiving a seventy percent discount on the internet to the library.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Maybe you didn't understand my question is like, you said you had to have a master's degree, all these, all these stipulations that you stated to be a library board. Let me finish.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then you said there was N R S that directed that. And that's a question for you too, Ted. Are you aware of the N R S?
I don't understand.
And is that because there's money, there's exchanging hands from the state and federal to the government? Because I intend not to take any grant money. It was completely funded by taxpayers.
A lot of what she said, if, if you sign up with the state for, for state and federal.
Oh, I have no intention of doing that.
So, so some of the, some of those are not applicable if you don't sign up.
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
If we fully fund it ourselves and we do not rely on the state and the federal government, yes.
You would not be considered a public library in the state of Nevada, however, just, which is that, again, that is at your discretion. I'm not here to argue one way or another. I just want to make sure that.
No, 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 we're not either. We're just trying to make sure that we understand.
So, and you can actually visit the state library's website and the minimum standards are all listed there. They specifically reference the N R S. Um, it's actually N R S three seventy-nine that all of the libraries are covered under and, and what it means to be a public library.
It's kind of crazy. Like the government overreach that happens, I mean, you just see it, just everyday life. It's just like, wow. We want to provide books and education and knowledge to our taxpayers base and then you gotta jump through these hoops and these hoops and like, I'm all about. I mean, if, if you haven't noticed, Lander County, we're, we're kind of a leader. We're not followers. And it's, uh, it's, um, I understand your position and why you tried to sell us not to do that. I completely do understand that. But I just, I personally don't think it's in the best benefit of our constituent base here in Lander County, so that's my opinion.
One of the questions that did come up, um, earlier at one of our other meetings was what kind of, uh, of, uh, action can we take? If someone is on the internet and surfing pornography or something that is uncomfortable to other people?
So we do have library policies in place and part of this E-rate agreement that we signed, um, requires that we do filter against pornographic imagery. So we actually will have filters that will be installed on the computers. Um, if you do go with us, we are asking for new computers. The ones in place are failing. That's that. But we do have filters that would block that, so that wouldn't be an issue. However, um, the most that can happen if a patron's doing something that goes against our policy is we ask them to get off the computer. They can lose their computer privileges. It's, it's not technically a crime. It's just against policy, so we would ask them to leave.
Um, how, how old are the computers that we have here that have been funded through you guys?
So the computers that we currently have in there are, I want to say about five years old. And they, they were rebuilt computers. Um, they were donated and we repurposed them, um, to avoid the cost of new computers. They've lasted us, but now they're starting to fail. And then before that, we had grant computers that we got through, um, the state of Nevada. We applied for a grant and got those and they failed as well, so.
Our last contract called for new computers still, right?
The, the one that we submitted, yes.
Yes.
So it, it called for, I believe we asked for ten new computers. Um, two are staff computers for here in Battle Mountain. Um, and then it would have six public computers. We would increase. Currently there was, there's, there's actually three because of how they failed, but we had five previously. And then, um, it would replace the staff computer in Austin and the public laptop that we have in place, we would put an actual computer that would stay out for the public to access.
So what is, I think one of the questions that I had had was what is the foot traffic and what is the amount of books that help? What is the utilization of this library? Do we have any numbers for that?
We do. Sorry, we brought a lot of stuff. Not sure we could answer questions.
We kind of went off your previous meeting.
Yeah, no worries.
After we realized you had a meeting. We watched it so we could see what your questions might have been.
So we do know that, um. Oh, here it is. That's why I couldn't find it. Okay, so for Battle Mountain, for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, which was before COVID, so that was our standard year. We showed that. I'm sorry, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, internet usage, we had nine hundred and ninety-six sessions that year and materials checked out. You had nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six. You currently have eleven, over eleven thousand items sitting in Battle Mountain, which is more than the contract states. And then in Austin, um, internet usage, you had fourteen, but Austin, the internet's been spotty. We're hoping with the, the fiber. If we, if that's still our library, we're hoping those numbers go up. And then materials checked out, Austin had six hundred and forty-five items. Last year, um, that, the number in Austin went up. It became one thousand two hundred and five. And then Battle Mountain did go down slightly, but that year was interrupted by COVID and they had six thousand six hundred and fifty-two checkouts. Battle Mountain currently has one thousand nine hundred and eighty registered patrons and Austin has a hundred and fifty-six.
What was the number for Battle Mountain?
Uh, one thousand nine hundred and eighty.
And then a hundred and fifty-six?
Mm-hmm. So Austin actually sees a lot of its use, um, on the state route. They get a lot of visits from Fallon and other libraries along that route.
But the, the hours in Austin are so minimal.
Yes. And that, if, that would be at the board's discretion if you want to increase the hours at your libraries, that would increase the salaries, obviously. But the hours have been set the same since the eighties. Those were the hours that the commission chose.
No, no, I understand that, but what, I, I wanted, I wanted them to be sure that, that they are open eight to five. So what have we got, um?
They're, uh, Mondays they're open one to six, Wednesdays one to five, and Fridays nine to noon.
Yeah, see, we're very spotty.
Yeah.
On that one thousand or the members we have in Battle Mountain, do you have a, a breakdown statistically of like what, uh, is happening? Like, are they using it for disleisure? Are they using it for educational purposes? Are they using it for, you, you understand what I'm saying?
I do. Um, that's not something we can really track.
Okay.
For patron privacy reasons, we try not to pay attention to what people.
For, for checkout wise, they do do a lot of, um, fiction. DVDs are huge audios. Audios which are very, very expensive, which we have a database for, which people can download at this point. Saves a lot of money, overdue fees and whatever, but you guys have a huge amount of DVD, audio patrons.
Okay.
So, um, we're of course open to any other questions or discussion, but we would ask that if the board is choosing to go their own way, that we can get notice sooner rather than later. So we can make those arrangements for staff and give them a heads up. And then we would go in and we would take our, um, Elko County mark, the Elko, Lander, Eureka County mark that we have on the books. We would mark that out. We would leave the books here, but we would like to, to clean up the system.
Yeah, we understand that.
So.
So the books that we have currently would stay here?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, except for the Baker and Taylor's. The Baker and Taylor's are our least booked, so they would have to come back in so we could return those.
All right, so.
Have we, cause I think in one of our previous meetings, we asked for like a cost analysis of what it would actually look like to be, uh, self-sufficient in our library services. Have we gotten any numbers as far as that or?
The, if we do the board, so she's speaking of two different things here. One, one is if you have a population, I believe of over a hundred thousand that she's referring to. And if you, so if we do our board where you have five representatives and they're an advisory board, um, then I don't believe that you have to have the, and you'd have to correct me if I'm wrong. Um, you do not have to have a certified librarian.
Okay.
And that's where the big cost, it's, it's going to be a savings because of the employees. We won't, the employees that we currently have, we can, we can utilize for the library. That was part of the plan moving forward. Um, the initial startup, and I need to look into this E-rate and see if there is a, an out or if that is, I'm not really sure. Have to talk with Ted about this, how they would sign for something that's in our building without us being aware of it.
Right.
Um, beings are contracted for our.
Cause we have a contract.
Yes.
Anything that stipulates anything within that, how can it be outside of that contract?
Correct. And, and that was, there was a budget for that in, in the previous, but it was never used. Um, but it never came back before us. So there's, so there's some questions there that need to be answered to make sure that that is truly. Cause that changes the cost benefit analysis.
So I would like to clarify two things. So if you do go the library board route, you do have to have the library director under the standards. For a population of one thousand to fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, public library jurisdiction shall have a library director who holds the credential of certified librarian from the state of Nevada.
That's, but this is only, we're only following the N R S if we're going to be a.
State recognized.
State-recognized library.
So again, but that is, like he was saying, that is something to consider. And then for the E-rate, the way that works is because the library board has, um, makes the decision on whether they want to comply with the federal regulations for E-rate. So only the library board had the authority to approve us becoming E-rate, um, compliant. And to get the funding for the library, we had to hold the contracts because we're the ones that are certifying with the feds. That we're following the stipulations they put in place with the filters and we're doing the bids and all the due diligence. We have to certify every year with them. And so we do that on behalf of Eureka, on behalf of Lander, on behalf of all the Elko libraries. Um, and the contract that was signed, this was back when, um, Keith was still the county manager. And I think Bert, you were just transferring in, but I, you were copied on those emails. Um, and they, we were directed to sign the contracts with the understanding that if Lander backed out, Lander would take over those contracts.
Yeah, I will, I will look into it, make sure, like I said, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with some of that and I didn't pay a lot of attention at that point in time.
It all depends on if, if we have public library status or not.
Whether.
I'm talking about the cost.
Well, the E-rate, the, the internet contract that the commissioners chose was for three years was Sky Fiber, so there is still two years left on that. What would change is if you don't have the E-rate discount, you would pay full price.
Right, that, that's, and that's what I'm referring to. If we're not a public library and we may not be able to become a public library.
You would have to take over the full cost of that contract.
It would cost us more, but it would cost us less on the director and, and other positions.
Now, who is the library board that you refer to? Is there, is there a?
State, right?
No, it's, um, in Elko County, the Library Board of Trustees.
So they're, they're in control of, of, of Elko, Lander and Eureka. That, that board of trustees in Elko is, they make, they make the call for?
Yes.
Okay.
So by our next meeting, can we have some, all these things pulled together so we have an idea, so we.
You bet. I have, I have a pretty good idea as of now. I will get with Ted and.
So we have total cost breakdowns so we can know, so we're not leaving anybody hanging and we're not, you know, keep, you know, going around and around with this.
Yes, and, and even if we do, whichever direction we do take, it's, uh, July, you know, is when our new budget takes place and that's.
Mm-hmm.
You guys, I know that the contract is, you know, expires in.
At the end of June, yes, yeah. We would continue offering services. We wouldn't just back out, but we, at, technically at the end of that contract, those positions terminate. I don't know what the county would want to do at that point. Um, we have other contracts for databases that we provide for Lander. That if we're not going to continue with our extension contract, then we would like to update our budgets that we have with those, with those other agencies. Cause we are part of a library consortium that we pay for our library software. Um, and maybe this is something else that you, you want to take into consideration. Um, how you catalog the books, how you keep those records. We pay, um, as part of a co-op. It's, it's to reduce costs in the state, but we have a shared catalog, a shared integrated library system where we enter those books and the patrons and all of that. If you backed out, you would no longer be a part of that contract, so you would have to come up with that software as well.
So yeah, that's the other thing is the catalog and the software. And videos are included.
So and the state library would also be more than willing, if you guys have questions that you'd like to ask directly to them. Um, they would be, they would guide you through the process, however, which way you went. They would have a lot more information probably than I do on the backend.
All right, so yeah, hopefully by our next meeting we'll have everything drawn together so we'll know exactly what we're going to do. We appreciate you ladies.
Thanks, Kathy.
No, thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Won't be at the next meeting, not the special meeting.
Not the special meeting, but the.
Twenty-second is what we're referring to.
If you have a twenty-second, please.
So and we. We can plan to be here for that meeting as well, or if you have questions that you can get to us ahead of time, we can try and find, um, documents or anything that would help answer. And then for E-rate questions, I would actually contact Jojo Myers with the governor's office as she's the one that's spearheading E-rate with all of the libraries in Nevada. Um, and I believe she would have been, um, in contact with the board two years ago. She was the one that was pushing that. We weren't really a part of that discussion. We can't, kind of, were brought in at the end, so.
So I have a question.
Of course.
Uh, who's, who's the librarian? Do you have one librarian for all three places?
No, like one library director or, yes, that would be me.
You're the library director.
Yes.
And, uh. The positions here in Lander County are just, what are they called?
Oh, we call them branch, um, branch assistants.
Okay.
They're not technically librarians because they're not credentialed, but they.
And that's what I'm referring to. Who has to be credentialed? You only have to have one credential for Eureka, Lander and Elko.
Yes, so, um, your population just gets combined into Elko's population and that means I have to have a master's degree, which I do. Um, if you took over and you did decide to go and become a state-registered library, you would only have to have a certified director, not necessarily a master's degree. Um, and that would be the only position that would actually have to be certified.
A four-year degree probably would.
Um, the library certification, you can actually get out of the University of Idaho and they can do it on their own time. There's, there's ways you can work around this. Um, and I can get that information.
They don't have to be, have a degree in library sciences?
No, not, not for your population size. They just have to be certified.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information.
Of course.
Really appreciate it.
And if you guys have any questions, we're more than, we're more than happy to help.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. All right, moving forward. Um, the University of Nevada Reno Extension Community and Economic Development for discussion and update only regarding Nevada Economics Assessment Project and N E A Group.
So there was a mix-up in communication and they thought that the meeting was going to be a couple days from now, so. So there was a mix-up in communication and they thought that the meeting was going to be a couple days from now, so can we table this until the twenty second? They said they can be available for the twenty second and it is gonna be a little bit of a lengthy update is what they told me. I'm not very familiar with it, but they said it's a lengthy update.
Yeah, it looked like it when we said like an hour, an hour and a half or something like that.
Yes.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and um table that. Okay. So uh Porter Group for discussion and possible action to create and then approve a list of projects for Lander County to submit to the Porter Group for potential federal funding, which could include grant um operations and or um based funding, community-based funding, so. Hello.
Morning Kayla.
Morning Commissioners.
Alright, you're welcome.
Um I'm just gonna reiterate what's here. They have Porter Group uh asked if we would be interested in, in supplying them a list of just what the kinda main projects that Lander County sees as, you know, top, top priorities. They have hired what they call a, a grants professional, let's say. Um and they're offering that within our contract with Lander County, just to throw some ideas at her. What she does is she takes that list, she goes through and actually pinpoints the ones that would fit perfectly for us, for us to consider uh to apply for. Could be like it says here, grant uh project-based uh community-based funding or uh grants through the USDA, federal government, any of those type of things.
So one of my questions Kayla, and also I, I would like to probably make it like a standard, anytime that we're looking at anything that's grant-based, that, that becomes part of the background information is like what strings are attached to those grants. I can give you an example. My first four years I ran as a commissioner, we were working with NRDA, I believe it was NRDA. Um and we were looking at uh a grant to help build homes here for a future uh workforce. And uh we did some digging and one of the strings that were attached to that was you had to leave, those properties had uh basically allowed openings for section eight housing. So if you had somebody that applied for section eight, so like uh I think at the time there, we had that big thing that happened in Louisiana. So if somebody wanted to move there, here, because there was section eight housing, we'd have to allow that. That was one of the strings attached to that grant. So it's just whenever I hear the term grant, my ears always go forward and it's like, okay, what are the strings attached? So do you know of any, like any things that if we were to accept this grant money, how we'd be on the hook for?
So all of it would come back before you guys. This is just giving them permission to the
Right.
pull those grants out and then obviously if we were to apply for them, it would come before you guys for approval. So then you could go through anything. And I did make it very clear to them that Lander County is not about grants that puts us under a thorn.
Right, yeah.
So I did make that very clear to them, so.
Um so we've got here the remodeling of the old Lander County Courthouse Museum, construction of the rail depot at the Cook House Museum.
Is this an additional cost to the county?
This is within some of the things that they had offered in the contract, just services.
Part of their contract?
Mm-hmm.
Did they send you a letter?
No, I mean con, I actually have bi-monthly meetings with them um to update on, on the lands bill.
Okay, cause I mean, I, I would appreciate, you know, some kinda backup on it of like, what? And um and I, all I have is the one page, but.
I'm sorry Patsy, I don't, I'm, I'm not understanding.
I mean, if they offered this, did they send it in an email or something?
Um no, during our meeting, he just says, hey, we're, you know, we're having this person that we're hiring onto our group. Would Lander County be interested in?
All oral.
Yeah.
All verbal.
Just to kind of.
So it's based around this grant, expert that's hired?
Yes, yeah. She's just part of the group now. She is hired on as the Porter Group or where we are contracted. If you want us to go back and look through that part, I'm sure it would be.
Um as far as the uh rail depot, is that something that um Lori is getting information on as well, for us to be putting that on our list?
Oh, yeah, definitely question that. I do doubt believe that the county can ask for a grant for five oh one C three.
Okay.
I think the five oh one C three
Has to do it.
has to petition for that grant.
Okay.
Unless, unless like in, in Commissioner, you and I have discussed this, unless it's a county museum or county art center.
Mm-hmm.
But our museum here, run by Lori, is, has no affiliation with the county.
Right. So that would wipe out item one on that list.
Cause we, yeah, we can't do or ask for anything.
Yeah, I believe when they refer to community-based funding, it would be if, I know I may be wrong, but my belief is that if the county had the museum or county, it was a county art center or the county museum, even if we had contracted with a third party to run it, it would be county-owned.
Mm-hmm.
And thus the county would petition for the, for the grant.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, we hadn't asked or do anything on their behalf.
Uh any of the infrastructure funding, cause I think that's something that all taxpayers win from.
But the courthouse could be one of them.
Yeah, courthouse.
It's definitely a county and inoperated.
I was able to meet this lady and she brought up a couple other ideas as far as um helping with like the indigent transport because our, our buses are no longer running. She brought up also telemedicine um for like our, our southern sites, things of that sort, that those would also be interesting ideas to, for Lander County to look at.
Both good ideas.
Um the affordable housing, uh cause there's an issue when the, to the best of my knowledge, when those John Marvel apartments went in, they were gonna help the, the people getting in there, getting section eight housing. Um but I, that, I mean, that's not really what's happening now. So some of them, their housing uh costs six hundred dollars a month. And when they're only bringing in a thousand dollars a month, it's, and you, for example, the person I was trying to help, I even got as, contacted, contacted the state and said, what affordable housing do you have? And if you're gonna, for the low-income housing, they can help you, but at the John Marvel, they don't have any um section eight housing for these people. And so the, all these elderly people and disabled people we have in there, the people who are running them right now, that's not really getting in them any help. So when you're paying sixty percent of your um income to rent and there's no one to help them. I mean, they're, you know, we've tried getting ahold of section eight and they said, there's nothing we can do for you because you're on this type of social security. Well, the matter of what kind of social. Yeah, exactly. But when we started with trying to get this whole thing going and get, kicking this off, it was to be affordable, you know, for the seniors that were living in there and that's kind of got pushed aside. So when I see anything that says affordable housing, I mean, it would be nice if there was something other than just a low-income apartment. It's not that I'm against help for that, that's not my issue. My issue is for the elderly, which, what that was set up for to begin with.
So the great thing about this is um even if we were to like say leave the Historical Society Rail Depot, they would pull those grants out. You guys could look at them and say, okay, this does not belong with the county. It could belong with this five oh one C three or that one and, and really you don't have to keep it, but it would be a service to those other entities here in Lander County that we could say, hey, look, there's these grants. Do you guys wanna take them and do something with them as well? So even if housing, if there was something out there for someone else to take care of, that maybe the Lander, that Lander County couldn't, does that make sense?
It does. So.
This is not binding to anything. It's just ideas.
Just information, yeah, no, very good.
I think anything to increase our internet service in town is great. So the broadband, I think that's a good idea. Anything that could help with our infrastructure is another good one.
And low, low-income housing may be a good one to put there, to see if we can, I can find something that we could tie the county into to help sustain low-income housing for old people.
Yeah, because that.
Exactly for senior, that's the key word. So, that's my, that's my question Ted is.
Yeah, that's.
How section eight works, if, so if you have, if you take grant money and it stipulates section eight, you have to, you have to be willing to accept section eight from any
Right.
any place in the United States, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And that's, that's why I was like, not for that whatsoever.
We would have to be specific.
That's right, that's exactly right. For our internal, or internal county use of seniors.
Yes.
Less fortunate, things like that. And then I, that would be something I would definitely be in favor of, but.
That would be a great thing to put on the list. See, see what's available.
Yeah.
And then we could try to, to doctor up uh ordinance that would would go along with that and, and do it for Austin and uh.
Because that, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if you had, let's say, I'm just throwing it out there, state of California, they have a homeless problem. If they had some money that was budgeted uh to say, okay, here's a voucher for section eight. Uh oh, Lander County's got some section eight homes here, right? And we would have to accept them, correct?
Yeah. Technically, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So I have been speaking with a lady named Holly out of Eureka. She does all their grant writing over there and does it for, for multiple municipalities throughout the state. And July one, she's gonna have some, her schedule kinda frees up. Some of her grants are gonna be out and I, and I would like to bring that back before the commission. She can write in some of these grants for her, her wage, but like Eureka, I think their, their school district, for example, they took about eighty thousand dollars last year with zero obligations to it. There are no ties or, but, but she reads through the fine print, makes sure that these apply and you know, advises on what, what are the good grants and what are bad grants. She does a bunch of uh um oh boy, we're working on it up there in the, for the Austin um.
Is she an independent contractor?
Yes. And uh
It's a good idea.
And so she, she may be able to come on with all the, with all the money that's going out there right now with COVID.
Yeah.
I think it's a really good idea, cause it doesn't necessarily apply to COVID, which is the, which is a garbage deal of it. But if there's this money out there with zero strings attached and we can have somebody go through, I think that it's a, a cheap investment that could pay off.
Well, and that was this information from Amade's office. They forwarded, they actually had gotten ahold of Washington DC. And it came out and if it, it was the, the Woodhouse Apartments or the other ones, yeah, they had my, all this money, but they had absolutely nothing for the John Marvel, for these people. I'm thinking, that makes absolutely no sense to me. So.
Lobbyist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh you know.
We have no lobbyists for the John Marvel Apartments.
Yeah. That's sad, so.
I mean, that's true, I mean.
That's true.
So for on the golf course, what is there, is there still a pa, a plan to, do they, it's, uh, what's that?
Back nine?
The back nine?
Personally, I don't. I don't think it's a good investment for the taxpayers, but that's, that's my stance. That's the commission's decision, but um the golf course already loses a good chunk of money every year. Um I think that we keep our front nine in really good shape. If, I think if the community wanted to do something that might be more beneficial, is you create a really small kids' course on the other side of that where little kids can go out there and, you know.
Can go off the agenda a little bit?
We, we are, but.
But it's on here.
It's on, it's a grant writing, it's a grant writing thing.
You're right, you're on here.
Yeah, it's a grant writing thing, but it's, but that's the uh, that's, that's my personal opinion is if we wanna do that, I just don't know that it's uh the best interest in the taxpayers' money.
Town, that one is actually they, of all of them on this list, that would be the hardest one to, to get up on.
Well, definitely most all the infrastructure funding items.
Yeah.
And then funding for the hu, uh for the World Human uh Powers Speed Challenge Track. So they're about like putting in a, a separate track? Is that what that is about?
So, so again, what Ted had said as far as the Lander County um deep, or not the Lander County Historic Museum, Cook House Museum, that's, this would kinda probably fall in the same, same idea that they should handle their own grants. But like I said, this isn't binding us.
No, exactly.
But if we found one for it, we could shoot it their ways.
So I'd say probably all of two, huh?
Yeah.
Looking at those items. I would definitely put emphasis on increasing our internet service for our town.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
It would be nice if, if Starlink uh Elon Musk thing came into, because he made, he put all those satellites up there to provide internet worldwide to rural, rural locations. And it's starting to come online now and it, from what I read, it's wonderful.
I know, I've talked to a few people that have Sky Fiber now and they're saying the speeds are incredible.
It's way better than the other.
And the satellite ones are faster than Sky Fiber.
Wow.
I mean, it's amazing.
We went with them some month ago and it went from like two and a half gigabytes to almost a hundred.
Yeah, that's what I've heard, forty to a hundreds, people are getting, I'm like, whoa.
So then the economic development, I mean, that's.
So that, there's a lot of infrastructure and economic development grant opportunities that are gonna be coming forward through um this session and uh just if any pop-up, just kind of that fit. They're not gonna throw something at us for um making housing for uh, albeit addicts or something, you know. Um just anything that fits within the realm of the infrastructure and economic development, they would probably show it to you guys and just say, or suggest is this one that you would be interested in.
So yeah, I think the ones that, the um remodeling the courthouse and every, uh the infrastructure and the ones that would be nice to be brought forward to look at.
So I crossed off the Historical Si- Society. You guys want me to get rid of that one? And then I added in senior and low-income housing.
And then remodeling of the courthouse, can we put that in there?
That one's, that one's on there, uh-huh. And then crossed off golf course, added in the tele, telemedicine, indigent. And may miss, did I miss anything?
No, I think that. Only if the other ones you happen to, they see something for that would help, um.
Well, do we wanna be apprised of like the Historical Society ones so we could pass that information on? We may not, we may not want to put in for it, but we may just wanna be apprised of.
Okay, absolutely.
So.
Or we may want the information, depending on what you guys choose to do with the old courthouse.
Mm-hmm.
You may wanna make that a historical slash art uh complex.
Which I know that they're gonna, within the next few weeks, come forward with some ideas and ask the commissioners what they want to do. Cause that conversation was had.
Patsy, um in Austin, there was, there's a piece that's on the, the lands bill that Austin wanted to do as an, like an artisan house. Is that correct? It's across from the museum, I believe, or next to the museum? Is that?
It was the space that they wanted, but I um I don't think it was to do art per se. I know they wanted the space because we had a lot of our equipment still off there, the old historic equipment out. It's, it's still out there, but um I don't know whether those people are still there.
Yeah.
Were first interested in art.
Okay.
The ones that we're heading it, no, we've.
We've lost so many people. Um and um, but I, but I know any, anytime something comes out that we're looking at a new place, we say, oh, we could do that. We could do art there. St. Augustine's, the church, the same thing. Oh, we could do some art, you know, down here and whatever. So um I do remember reading that now, now that you're saying that, but I think, I think that was frank. Um but I know we want, we want the space, cause we need the land. But um that's a beautiful old historic home that's, that's all okay too. Probably needs a few improvements, but um I don't think it was, would do well for an art center.
Okay.
Per se.
What about um, uh as far as infrastructure, what about increasing, is there more area where we could put more curb and gutter and just kinda clean up our, our streets in town and make them look, I mean, could we use some of the money for that? I mean, extending that curb and gutter on, on both the main areas and further out and, and that's an idea.
We do have some that budgeted for our sidewalk projects, but if we can get a grant funded.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And I know there are things available for that because these districts that, that uh some of these counties set up uh are able to get grants for their districts because they're their own legal entity.
Hmm.
And I, I'm thankful that we never created one, but but I, but since we didn't, we can ask as a county rather than as a district.
Not those look, that, those ideas sound good to me. Does anybody else have anything?
Thanks Kayla.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we take a five-minute break? Five-minute break. Alright, we're gonna reopen number seven.
I'm muted.
So uh it needs to be an action item. So do we have a, have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the. I'll make a motion that we accept the list that Kyla read to us during the meeting.
Put together, alright, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, Brian made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, moving forward. So, um, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the plan and um stratogram, yeah?
Strategum.
Strategum in regards to the governor's directive zero four one.
And we would like to go into closed litigation.
So, we're gonna go into closed litigation, alright.
So, phones need to be, we're just gonna go in your office, okay.
Alright, we're gonna go.
Muted.
Alright.
This conference is unmuted.
Alright. So, after our short meeting, we have a motion.
So, I'll make a motion that we. Approve. Uh, the um. Plan. How should I word it Ted?
Correspondence is mine.
Improve the plan and strategum discussed in litigation meeting.
Okay.
With with the modifications.
Right.
Discuss.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the plan and strategum. Um, in a closed session with the noted changes, uh, to the governor's directive oh four one.
With all, with all.
And uh, and all commissioners to sign.
Alright.
I'll second it.
Alright, so, Brian made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
And you guys have that?
That's right, yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Alright.
And Art wanted to let the commissioner that he had isolated today, he apologized for not being able to be here, um, he wishes he could be here, because he thinks this is a very big.
Let's call him afterwards and ask uh him permission for somebody to sign his name.
Okay, we will reach out Art and make sure that he approves of this plan as well, so it can, uh, so, because he does think that this is a big deal, I mean. Wish he was here to support it.
Very good.
Yeah, and I'd like all five signatures on there.
Oh, absolutely, so, alright, so we're gonna go ahead to um correspondence reports, future agenda items. So, I had a question uh for the airport, on, because we had spoken before about the. Person running the base, are we doing, looking at anything different, or are we holding off our contract?
No, we are, we are looking at it, um, things where our budget doesn't start until July one. We'll, um, I'm working with Ted, and we'll, we'll be back in front of you guys when we get closer to that, our new budget.
Okay, very good, alright.
Um, can you uh clarify our next meeting, since we haven't discussed that?
Oh, I do apologize, um, we do have a special meeting on the fourteenth, and it will be just to, it's a, it's a one item agenda to, um.
Approve the tentative budget.
Yes, approve tentative budget, if you guys would like to call in, we can have somebody come in and open the meeting, we can call in, and uh.
I I will be calling in, sure.
Okay.
Are we gonna go over the budget?
It does require signatures, um.
I can take it to Brian.
Yeah, and we can, we can run it to whoever, whoever needs it, but it does require signatures, and that's just for us to be compliant with the state.
And what time is the meeting?
At ten AM, I believe is what. Can we move that to ten AM?
Um, I'll have to double check.
I'm looking.
We posted that gen- agenda.
I'll look real quick.
Oh, you did post it?
Yeah.
Oh.
For some reason, I thought that we had moved it from nine to ten.
Did you, or it's not, uh, it's not posted yet, I.
It's not posted, no.
Yeah, but I have it here.
Um, how did you post it tomorrow, right? Yeah, tomorrow by nine. Yeah, so I'm, I'll post this afternoon.
Yeah, so would would ten be, would ten work for everybody, or would you guys like to be at nine, cuz we can still.
It says here.
Doesn't say nine. Nine.
It says nine on on the agenda.
Would you like us to move it to ten? Okay.
Yeah, we'll say ten then.
And I'll be emailed out, is that correct? Yeah.
At ten, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, I should have had that in my update at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, is that gonna start at nine o'clock?
No, it'll start at ten o'clock, ten AM, yep.
So, do we have any other future agenda items?
We will have our resolution on the twenty second for the innovation zones.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I don't know, and you and I will be giving their hour and a half to two-hour update.
Oh, and then we're gonna also have the uh information for the um.
For the library.
The libraries.
Yep.
Okay, very good, alright, anything else? Alright, so, any public comment? None?
Okay, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Muted.
Second?
I'll second it.
Unmuted.
Brian made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, very good, we're done, thank you.
Goodbye.